First item on the agenda, roll call. May Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Lasar Juajardo,
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez, Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Sa Flores. We do have a call.
Two thousand and members.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to one B, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation, and it will be done by Carla Zavera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's bow our heads. As we gather here today as members of this great city, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our services to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better city and a better world. Amen.
Thank you, Carla. Okay, moving on, item two, public testimony. Hilda, did anybody sign up? Item three, public hearings, did anybody sign up? Item four, city manager's report. And we do have, um, for A, submission of financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2022. And we have Carla Zavera in the audience if you guys have any particular questions. Hearing none. For B, city engineer's report. We also have Ruben Alfaro in the audience if you guys have any questions on a particular project. No questions. Moving on, for C, city events of interest. We do have a few announcements, some of them are in the future, so we'll continue to remind you. First one is the FAR Warrior Race that will be taking place on Saturday, March 4th, at the FAR auditorium, 3,001 North Cage. We do have an entry fee of $35. Check-in will be at 6:00 a.m. Yup, you heard that right, 6:00 a.m. To start the race at 7:00 a.m. And, um, the Warrior Race will consist in 100-meter swim, six-mile bike, two-mile run, and an obstacle course at the end. So we'll see you guys there. I hope everybody's ready. I already went to take one swimming lesson, so. I should be there. I shall survive. We'll also be having our 17th Annual St. Patrick's 5K on March 18th, from 9:00 a.m. until they finish, until the last runner finishes. And that will be on 1,000 South Fur, which is where it takes place every year. PD will be hosting their Community Police Academy. It's a 10-week course. And they've also added a youth community police academy. So they're already taking applications. Classes will start on March 21st. And there will be every Tuesday from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So if you're interested, please make sure you call the police department or look for the information online so you can sign up and take, take advantage of this opportunity. Also, we want to make sure that we recognize we do have our Vital Statistics Division and the Administration Department, and they have received the five-star award for the Texas Health and Human Services for excellence in the Vital Statistics Registration Process. This award honors partners who go above and beyond the duties of birth and death registrations and ensure excellence, customer service, security, and data quality in Texas. And we do have Hilda Pedraza and Maritza Gutierrez, who run the show. And they're the only two individuals that do this for the entire city. So thank you, ladies, for all the great work that you guys do.
Thank you, ladies.
They've been very active collecting, you know, awards, awards and trophies. So thank you, guys, for, for doing that. The next one, we do have Andrew Cannon. If you can please join us at the podium. He's here with RGV MPO, and he would like to present the City Commission, the State of the System Book.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ms. Allen East. I'm not going to do your warrior run, so. Don't even try to talk me into that one.
I thought you were singing a song, but go ahead.
Shoot, no. I sing as good as I run. I just wanted to introduce the city. We're making rounds to all the city and through the RGV and the region of our new State of the System Report. This is the first time that the MPO has undertaken this exercise, and we think that it's really important. We've gotten a lot of good, positive feedback on it. We're trying to share it with all the cities. So if it's okay with you, we'll leave some here with Hilda to place out in the city offices or in the lobby to share. But it's full of good information, from bridge crossings to SpaceX and education, which we think is important. We're going to be fortunate enough to be participating in the RGV days up in Austin in a couple of weeks with the Valley Partnership. So we're going to be sharing this information with our legislators up there in Austin as well. We think it's important that some that have never been to the Valley, maybe know very little about the Valley, have a better insight into the Valley and an understanding of what and who we are and how things operate, and that we're just not some small mom-and-pop community. We're a major metro area, and we want to be recognized as such more in the future. So we just wanted to share this with all of you. If you have any questions on it, please, I'll take some now, but there's information there. Feel free to contact us. If we can get more information out somewhere, some other city offices or something, please let us know. We want to share it as much as possible because, again, we think it's really prudent, very important information for our region in a positive light.
I have a question, just to let the people know because we're going to be impacted there in South Far. That toll road is going to start here real quick, isn't it? And it's going to last until November, something I read?
The 365?
The 365. And it's going to be affected by all the way to McCall Road or something like that?
From here, it's the, I think that's the right area, all the way to Anseldo.
Okay. So that whole area is going to be affected?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Now we can let the people know because a lot of, we have a lot of constituents and residents that live in South Far and probably use that little corridor there, that they will probably be affected.
You know, it's tremendous, the growth that we have as a region, just one of the things that we suffer through is the construction and the demand that goes on our infrastructure, be able to meet that growth. So they truly are growing pains. I'm extremely hopeful that through this next legislative session, we'll be able to work with our reps and senators to be able to secure more funding for the IBTC project, which I think it's our number-two rated project at the MPO. I think it's one of the most paramount projects we have to try to move that freight and truck traffic off of the roadways to a high-speed arterial and connect it up to Interstate 2 and back and forth. I think that's extremely important for the region. I just came from a Border Trade Advisory Committee last week up in Austin in the Sleet and everything, and it was with the new Secretary of State, Jane Nelson. And it was interesting to listen to some of the other regions complain about, you know, they don't have a, there's too much backlog, too much backup. They can't get on the interstate quick enough. And I'm like, are you kidding me? We've got a bridge with no direct access to the interstate. And all the produce you're eating at dinner probably came across this bridge. So we're fighting for it. We're hopeful that we'll be able to secure the rest of that funding. And I know it's a priority for the mayor and for all of you as well. So hopefully, we'll have good news on that in the near-term future as well.
Yeah, I just want to let people know that we're watching from home that it is going to be, there is going to be some backlog back over there until like November, right? My understanding is correct?
Oh, easily.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And it may not appear so, but this project out here is really moving fast. I know that's a hard sell to make this on, but it's really moving quickly. I'm sort of surprised at how quickly it is moving. It's inconvenient. It's not very user-friendly right now, but it's going to be wonderful once it's finished. And they, they are really moving quickly on it, so.
Yeah, just so people know that once this is done, the roads are going to open up. We're going to see a lot less truck traffic coming through Cage, through Jackson. So it's going to be a little breathing room for, for all of us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, and last but not least, on City Manager's Report, we do have Danny Ramirez from EMS that would like to call up some of his staff members for a special recognition.
Good afternoon. Danny Ramirez, EMS chief, for the record. So with me up here is Carolina Flores. She's a paramedic with FAR EMS. Sam Contreras, he's one of our firefighters of the fire department. Carlos Avendano, he's one of our TCOs with dispatch. And Juan Salinas, one of our other TCOs. And the reason we're here is on January 6th, a month ago today, at about midnight, we got a call, a non-one call in South Far for a pregnancy call. And upon arrival, they found a young lady who was in labor. Were transporting to the hospital when the baby decided he's coming out now. And so she, sorry about that. Yeah, so we ended up delivering, or not we, they, they ended up delivering the baby in the back of the ambulance, a little healthy girl. They were going to try to make it today. Unfortunately, they couldn't make it. But it's important for us to recognize the strong work that, that the guys do. It doesn't happen very often for, for us to be able to help with the assistance of a delivery of a baby. And so it's important for us to recognize. And one way we recognize is obviously by, by giving a commendation, clinical excellence. And it says, "This commendation is awarded as a result of an act to assist in delivery of human life on January 6th, 2023, with immediate intervention through the FAR Public Safety System." And additionally, what we do is we also give them a stork, right? And so depending whether it's a boy or a girl, they get a pink stork or a blue stork. For the exception of Sam, Sam's going to get a blue stork. Right, Sam?
Yes.
And so, no, we're going to give him a pink stork. So it's a joke. So Sam initially told mom, "Congratulations, you have a boy." And she's like, "What?" And he goes, "Oh, hold on." And he looked, and he goes, "Oh, it's a girl." So.
The stem color of the apple.
Right. So I'd like to present these to these, these fine public safety responders. It's a system that was built so that we provide the best service for the community, and it's working. We've had cardiac arrest saves, child delivery, responding to traumatic injuries, where all the system works together, PD, fire, and EMS, to provide the best care for the community. One other thing that we have, and like I said, unfortunately, mom's not here, but we had a little onesie made.
Oh, that's awesome.
And it says, "Born in an ambulance." So, and so when, once mom, we could hold the mom or she can come by the office. And we got some, some guys that donated Pampers and stuff, so we're going to give it to mom. But I'd like to call up at this time, Sam Contreras? Carlos, I'm sorry about, sorry about that. Carlos? And Carolina? Your storks?
Hello?
Yeah. And so, again, we appreciate the fact that we can recognize staff. Hopefully, we can get a picture with you guys before we continue. And thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you, guys. And I believe, Danny, do you want to say a few words? I know we have a video for, also some, some of the magic that your guys make happen, so.
So one other thing that, that we've been doing is working partnerships with not just other cities, but also facilities that we work with. A couple of weeks ago, we transported a patient that was on ECMO. First time it's ever been done. We transported a patient from here to Fort Worth. It was our team and a team from Doctor's Hospital Renaissance that went, Dr. Phillips was in the back of the ambulance with the guys. They rode all the way to Fort Worth and, and came back, delivered the patient successfully. And so it's the first time that it's been done, and we're super excited to be a part of that. We had crews that were willing to step up and, and take on the challenge to assist with this. In fact, and, well, we'll watch the video, and then we'll go from there.
We needed people also willing to get us there, and that's where FAR EMS stepped up.
The call that day, a patient in critical care.
When this call came out, we understood the severity of the call.
The destination, Fort Worth, Texas.
It took them nine and a half hours to get there.
The answer, FAR EMS.
Immediately, Andrew volunteered and says, "I want to take this call."
Andrew Gonzalez is no stranger to working under pressure. He's a paramedic responsible for transporting stable and sick patients for FAR EMS.
I think when it comes to something like that, it's all about mindset.
One day, his mindset changed when he got a call to transfer a patient in need of life-saving treatment using state-of-the-art technology. That technology is called ECMO, extracorporeal membrane oxygenation. It pumps oxygen-filled blood into patients with a weak heart and lungs.
I was a baby. I was actually an ECMO patient. I was actually born at a hospital in McAllen, and I got sent to Dallas.
But if the device fails, they would instantly die.
It's a life-saving technology, new to the Valley, DHR Health, and the team at FAR EMS.
To our knowledge, this is the first time that a Valley-centered team has taken an ECMO patient to anywhere, much less, you know, San Antonio or Houston, much less all the way to Fort Worth.
Thirty years later, the former ECMO patient is now an ECMO hero.
Being able to see ECMO work from the other side, not as the patient, that made it worth it.
With help from advanced EMT partner Gladys Reyes and a team of DHR Health Level 1 Trauma Center Healthcare Workers, Gonzalez got the patient to the city of Fort Worth safely. A nine-hour journey with the most-prepared team.
Kind of like a full-circle moment.
A full-circle moment, where Gonzalez returned home with a new perspective.
It makes me feel really good. It gives me pride that the fact that these guys are willing to step up and do things like that.
Yeah, so something like that is just extraordinary, right? So to see something like that. One of the things, Dr. Phillips is here with us, and I'd like for him to say a couple of words, but I have a very big new respect for this team, right? So one of the things that I learned was when they got up there, he got a call from his boss and says, "Okay, you know, we're getting a flight for you so you guys can fly back home." And he's like, "No, this is my team. I'm driving back in the ambulance with my team." And so for him to be able to come back with us in the ambulance, you know, says a lot about his care and how he wants to take care of people and be part of a team. So, Dr. Phillips?
So this group should be very proud of FAR EMS and what they did. It, as scary as maybe it looks here in the video, it's much scarier in person. So they stepped right up to it. It's a big deal, big deal that's coming from the Valley. We weren't dependent on Houston. We weren't dependent on Dallas, nobody. And it came here from FAR, so kudos to them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll be moving on to item five, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries. It's 419, according to sections 551.071 to 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby give notice that it is convenient into executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda. The time is now?
4:20.
election municipal general de la ciudad de FAR el seis de mayo de 2023 para elegir al alcalde comisionados lugares uno, cinco, y seis y la designación de los distritos electorales y centros de votación.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Six B, consideration action of any on ordinance, amending ordinance number 02019-42 rental city facilities.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Six C, consideration action of any on ordinance directing the city manager to vacate, abandon, and close 830 feet by 633.97 feet street right-of-way, consisting of 0.437 of an acre, 19,019.10 square feet, located on the east side of Lot 1 FAR Logistics Center Phase 1 subdivision FAR Hidalgo County, Texas. This is the first reading.
I have a question on that. Exactly where is this?
Exactly, Kimberly, can you let them know exactly the location?
I can see the picture here, but I, yeah.
This is on, on the request from Mr. Adolfo.
Yes, sir. This is on the, on the north side of Anaya Road, west of South Cage.
Oh, west.
So it's near International Boulevard, which is on the west boundary of the subdivision, or west, west boundary of Lot 1.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? And I think a little bit of discussion on that. I think the reason why we're banning it is because in the back, when I'm mistaken, the Drainage District is buying a big portion, and they're going to put a, expand the Drainage District back there, right?
Yes, sir. Ed Wiley, for the record, it's going to be a dead-end road. We had intended for it to go through, to punch out another street, but now when the county bought the ditch, it's going to go nowhere. So there's no reason for us to have it. Might as well put it back on the tax rules.
Yeah, so that area will, people there will know that they're expanding 100-foot in the back area. I was talking to people from Drainage District, and they're going to be doing a huge drain there to help for any type of flooding and stuff like that. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Six D, consideration action of any on resolution authorizing the city of FAR to enter into an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to close state roadways for public events.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Six E, consideration action of any on resolution appointing, reappointing two regular members to the Tierra del Sol Golf Club Advisory Board. And we do have Mr. Carlos Villegas and Ricardo Medina, who wish to continue serving on the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Seven A, consultation with the Board of Commissioners on the hiring of department directors, and this is a no action. Eight A, consideration action of any authorizing city manager to award request for proposals for capital lease financing for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and enter into contract with US Bancorp Government Leasing and Financing, Inc. from Denver, Colorado.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
On the four bids, the lowest one was, um, Congen Bank? Why is it that we didn't get that one?
Carla Zavera, Finance Director, for the record. We did look, we couldn't find much information on that bank. And we've worked with US Bancorp for many, many years, and they still, even though they were a little bit higher, their standards and their reputation and, I guess, their familiarity with municipal financing, government, it's, it's at the top. So that's what I'm recommending. But of course, we can always revise. But that's our, my recommendation, to go with US Bancorp. And the difference in interest is not that, that high.
Is that the same reason for the other one? That's lower as well?
Yes. Yes, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't find much information on, on, on those banks. And I guess we don't, we also have the risk of who's lending us the money, and there's a lot of legalities. So that's why we, we rather, I rather go with someone who we have worked already for many years.
Okay.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to nine A, consideration action of any on change order number one and the amount of 598, 86320 to the Professional Engineering Service Agreement with Copfendy and Associates for the city Wide Fiber Optic Project, teamfar.net, for additional scope of work. And this item will remain table.
Move to table.
No action taken, which is just tables.
Yes, yeah, it will remain table.
Yeah.
Nine B, consideration action of any on memorandum of understanding between city of FAR and city of McAllen for a roll-off container for collection of recyclable plastic for a $75 fee per service.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Nine C, consideration action of any interlocal agreement between FAR Police Department and the Office of Criminal District Attorney of Hidalgo for forfeiture cases filed pursuant to Article 59 of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. And this is just to update the name of the new DA.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, nine D, consideration action of any on service agreement with Lexicool LLC for the purchase of an annual subscription service for the Purchase of an Annual Subscription Service for Policies, Procedures and a Learning Platform for Use by the FIRE Department Utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Contract Number Zero-One-One-Eight-Two-Two-LXP in the Amount of seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-eighteen-and-twenty-five cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Why is it that we have to buy um, policies and procedures uh, when, when you can't get them off the internet?
So these are, um, Laura Rodriguez, Fire Chief, these are specific to the FIRE Department. They're both, uh, they're operational uh, policies and procedures, so how we respond to calls, the different types of calls. Um, our, our procedures are obsolete and outdated. They, they go back as far as thirty years. And this service provides the latest regulatory requirements by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection and also the National Fire Protection Association, um, which is what all of our standard operating procedures for emergency response are based by, based on. So this will be a one-time, we'll do this one time, and then in three to five years, we'll look at uh, our policies and procedures again to see if they're updated. And right now, we've got them spread out, they've been developed over thirty years, and a lot of them are obsolete, and it's, it's uh, gotten very difficult for staff to try to go through. So what we're gonna do is just completely do a rewrite of all the policies and procedures for the FIRE Department.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Nine E, Consideration Action Event, On Authorization City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Bud Griffin Customer Support from San Antonio, Texas, for the Preventative Maintenance Service at the City of FAR Emergency Center.
Move for approval, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Nine F, Consideration Action Event, On Authorization City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Texas Manufacturing Assistance Center, TMAC, for FAR International Bridge Strategic Planning Services.
Move for approval, second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Nine G, Consideration Action Event, On Authorization City Manager to Enter Into Agreement with Venivate INC., doing business as Neighborly Software from Atlanta, Georgia, for Neighborly Software Comprehensive Housing Economic and Community Development Focus Software for the Amount of seventeen thousand.
Move to approve.
I have a question on that.
Yeah?
Do you want to put a second on it?
I'll second it, yeah.
Any discussion? Yes, we do.
Cindy, I'll ask you the same question. How come we can't get this information from the internet? Is it something that it can only be provided by this company or what?
She's coming.
Cynthia Garza, Director of External Relations. Uh, this software is actually specific in terms of helping us in terms of meeting all the deadlines and efficiencies that HUD uh, actually asks of us in terms of regulatory. So a lot of other CDBG programs use this software specifically to make sure that they continue following all the regulatory efforts on HUD's behalf.
Seems like it's easier to just go and get it from.
And this is paid through CDBG funds. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Nine H, Consideration Action Event, On Authorization City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Doctor's Hospital Renaissance LTD for Wellness Lab Screening Services.
Move for approval, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Before we adjourn.
Before we adjourn, at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Celeste Huff. She's the new District Director for Congresswoman Monica de la Cruz.
Oh.
Oh.
Everybody would.
Welcome.
Welcome you here to the City of FAR. Great work in which I guess we'll have a, you'll be our direct contact to the Congresswoman.
Thank you. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Mayor and Councilmen and women here. We're here to serve anything that you need. Our office is still in transition, so please bear with us, but you do have direct contacts for our office. Um, any constituent needing any service, we are here to serve. They can, best way right now is contact um, through online on our website, and then a, a caseworker will reach out to them.
Thank you for joining us today. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
The lady who delivered?
Oh, the baby? The baby who got delivered?
Danny.
Is that her? Danny.
Do we have the baby's mom and the baby?
Yeah. If she'd like to come up?
Coming up.
You're gonna introduce us to your baby.
His name is Danny? Oh, it's a baby girl, right?
It's a baby girl.
Is she bringing the baby?
Ah, she's so tiny. We all want to hold the baby.
So this is Sarah, the baby's mom. Unfortunately, the crews had to go back because uh, got busy out there, right? So um, but uh, Sarah made it in, so we do have um, a little onesie. Born in ambulance.
One of a kind.
Yeah, one of a kind. And then we have a little stork, so we give this to the medics every time they deliver a baby. So we're gonna give you a stork, and then some of the guys pitched in, and we got you some papers for the baby.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes. And thank you for making it out here.
Yes, thanks for coming out to our, to our future Ms. FAR.
I, you guys should take a picture with the baby now.
Is that a future voter?
Let's go ahead and adjourn, then we'll take, we'll go ahead and adjourn, then we'll take a picture.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, uh, they're gonna adjourn.
We're gonna adjourn, then we'll take the picture.
Yeah, you can come up.
You can go ahead and come up. All those in favor? Unanimous, the meeting's adjourned.